I'm here to sit down.
Okay, very good. It's called meeting order with the Pledge of Allegiance. I pledge allegiance. Sorry, Missy.
Sorry.
Hold on. Okay. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Welcome, everybody. Do you mind if I take your agenda? Just, I'm sorry, I did that last time.
No, that's okay.
I'll just look. So we have the meeting minutes from June. Sorry, hold on, that's my.
Turn off your speaker.
I think we're good. Okay. So with the meeting minutes from the June 4th, special meeting, the June 10th, 2024, regular meeting, the June 24th, 2004 budget workshop, and the June 24th, 2024, regular meeting, all attached to this agenda, can I get a motion to approve these minutes?
So moved.
Thanks, Lisa. Can I get a second for that?
Second.
Very good. Any questions, comments, changes on any of the agendas? Okay, with nothing being said, we can take a vote for approval of the June 4th, 2024 special meeting minutes, the June 10th, 2024 regular meeting minutes, the June 24th, 2024 budget workshop, and the June 24th, 2024 regular meeting. All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Anyone opposed? Abstentions? Okay, motion carried. Any additions to the agenda? Comments from visitors? We don't have any, so I'm going to doubt that. Okay, let's move on to the chairperson's report. Who's me? And I'm not sure I have anything to report, so if Bob comes in, maybe he can, he can fill us in. And then on to the superintendent's report, we've got ZONAR resignation and administrative staff summer training.
Sure. Hi, everybody. Happy August, not quite yet. Happy end of July, I know, I know, I know.
It fills up.
Long Sunday night in August.
I just wanted to spiral back to ZONAR, which is the bus tracking system that we were kind of piloting with a few, you know, parents in districts. I think we might have had maybe a half a dozen people utilize. The feedback we received, well, first of all, I think some might have thought it would be tracking the child versus the bus. So if we talk about kind of value.
Did people really think that? How would it track the child?
I think that's what people were hoping for, you know? Because some of the feedback is, well, how do I know that my child didn't get on the bus?
Oh, right.
Which, we wouldn't know that. There are some limitations to the product in terms of updating with some areas through town, and I think we shared before, if we were to make any bus changes during the day, we can't make that change with ZONAR because ZONAR updates overnight. You know, we did receive a little bit of positive in terms of it could be helpful if you were, you know, line a ballpark of maybe where the bus is, as long as you recognize that it's not, you know, 100%. It's not like you're watching the Uber driver, right? And watching them, you know, drive up. So my question for the board is, the other piece is, if there are questions, somebody would need to be available with a phone number to, you know, respond to those questions, both in the morning and the afternoon. So my question to the board, yes, Mr. Walsh?
I'm sorry, when you say bus changes during the day.
Sure.
You're talking about weather, road closures, emergencies, those type of things?
Primarily, sometimes we might have a bus with a dead battery, or we make a change because of a maintenance, so they'll do, they'll take the reserve bus that's on grounds and utilize that. We wouldn't be able to change that information.
Yeah, you're talking the unexpected.
Yes. Plus, if there is early dismissal due to weather that's not planned, that wouldn't be changed. We would be able to put in like early release all ahead of time. But anything that's not, you know, programmed at least a day ahead of time, or late openings, things like that.
Yep.
So, you know, the cost, a couple of our parents asked about the cost. The cost is actually quite minimal. Remember, the bus company actually paid for the services, a service for them as well, you know, with their bus company. It's more so, you know, I like to use the term value-added, you know, does it give us kind of value-added for our parents? We did a small, you know, very small pilot, so my question to the board is, you know, do you have thoughts on how, on what we'd like to do, you know, for next steps with ZONAR?
I would, if it's not a high cost, I think there's enough value to justify it, but I also think it should be a continuing project, and we should work with the bus company to see what other districts are using ZONAR particularly, and put some pressure on them to.
Make it better.
Make it better, because as you said, you mentioned what goes through my head, because I constantly have to use Uber and Lyft to get to the airport and back. They're driving through the same dead spots, and you see that vehicle track. You might see a blip, but as soon as they're back in service, it's right back there. This system, once it goes through that section on Turkey Hills Road, or in the Little Section, or Old Road, or that, that dead zone, half the time it doesn't come back. It's like, it just stalled a mile before that dead zone, and it just sits there for the next hour, and it doesn't move. So the technology's out there, so I think somebody needs to pressure ZONAR to fix their system.
Right, and if they fix the system, it wouldn't matter if there was a delay, or it would matter, obviously, if it was a different bus. But if there was a delay or a change in schedule, the program would be on the bus, so you'd just be tracking the bus.
Exactly.
Which is, I know, that's what I thought it was.
I mean, all these ride services, and even Instacart, you can watch your groceries getting delivered, stop and shop, you can watch get delivered. There are so many platforms out there that have already figured this out. I'm sure they're not, it's not IP that they're using, I'm sure they're using a different service.
They use AT&amp;T. They use AT&amp;T, so it depends.
There's gotta be something.
It's, you know, if they went to Horizon or other ones, they use AT, he said they use AT&amp;T, so we're limited to the AT&amp;T cell service, I can't speak for other drivers.
Yeah, that doesn't, that doesn't address.
But once they get back in.
Ricky just described is, if you've got a dead zone, just kind of graphically here, and you drop here, you should come back on the screen at this point.
I totally agree, but I have AT&amp;T.
And no, I haven't seen it.
On my phone, using AT&amp;T in this town.
Does it, I'm sorry, does it?
No, the bus, like.
It doesn't come back on.
It would like.
Does it ever come back on?
Yes, it does.
Eventually, but usually by the time.
Is it a delay, or is it coming back on and it's?
I stopped watching it after my kids got off the bus, and the bus is still miles away. Like, it just stopped there at the same time every day.
At the dead.
At the dead zone, and then I checked, I went up to like an hour after, and sometimes it's just, it looks like it's parked alongside a road somewhere. I'm like, ah.
I mean, in my experience, watching it and using it, I'm not sure, to me, it's almost worse to have a product that works poorly than to not have a product at all. Because I was waiting, there was one time, I started to rely on the bus ding that I had set up on my phone saying that it was going to be coming soon, and it didn't ding, and it didn't ding, and I looked at it, and I was like, oh, I guess maybe the bus is like stopped. Next thing I know, the bus is going to the airport. It was, there was a field trip or something that day, and the bus had gone to a different location.
Starbase, probably.
Starbase is what it was. And so in the meantime, my kid's sitting there, and he hasn't gone out to the road, so to me, we only are trying to use it as a supplemental crutch to help you know when to get the kid out, or if the bus is running ahead or behind, but when it's not reliable, to me, it was far worse.
So Lisa, that might have been a situation where your bus, instead of picking up, was directed to a field trip, so your child was on a different bus, yeah.
I mean, I really think that it would, based on what it is right now, it causes more problems.
You saw that it went to the airport, so then it does track the bus live.
It tracked the actual, tracked the actual bus, but it didn't track my route. Right, it didn't track my route.
No, 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 I know. But then how come if we had a change in schedule, like an early release, weren't you saying if there was an early release or something, it wouldn't work?
Because it's a time.
Oh, it's not at the right window?
It's out of the regular window.
Yes.
It's a time, so every, so every once in a while, it'll still get a ding now.
So that's an idea, the pressure of why does it need to be a time? Why isn't it just live?
It's a time.
All the time, then it would be.
It's a morning time and afternoon, an hour before and an hour after.
They use those buses for other districts too.
And they don't want us to track them when they're not on ours.
Which is.
Well, they could turn it off, because no matter what, we're never going to school after 4:00, you know what I mean? We don't even go to sports.
Can we ask, is M&amp;J?
That is M&amp;J.
Can we ask them, do we know the other districts surrounding us that use ZONAR? Because maybe they're all having the same issues.
We talked to one, and they were having the same issues with the, with the cell service body.
If there's enough of us who are having the same issues, maybe M&amp;J needs to look at, there's other vendors who do the same thing.
Well, M&amp;J is more using it to track their fleet, not so much to make sure, and I spoke with them the other day about other things, and he did say, keep in mind that this is not a tool for the parents to rush their kid out, because you can't rely on anything. Their kid's supposed to be there at a certain time, and it's really not for that, and that's what he's afraid, more people are going to start using it, and then kids are going to miss the bus, because there's always, sometimes there's always a delay, and he actually said that to me. This is not a tool, it's a tool to say, just, you're running late to get home, to get, to pick up your child after school, you want to know where the bus is. It's not to really put your bus on the, your child on the bus in the morning, it's just, I agree with you.
But it works, it works for them.
It works for them, yes, because.
And that's what it's built for. And now what we're asking for is beyond.
If you go on their website, they have, I mean, they do a lot of things. You can get an ID card and have, you can scan your barcode as each kid gets on, so you know what bus they're on.
Only on ZONAR right now.
Not at the moment, but I did look at them before, they have this capability. So they have expanded capabilities.
Everything for a price.
And with everything you see.
These regions, other districts feel the same way.
Are there other services that M&amp;J would allow us to use?
If, that's why, I mean, that was my thought of.
Should we be looking at?
If we get a big enough group that says, hey, we want this, and we'll pay for it.
Well, the reality is, it's 2024, it's, we're in a technology age, like, at some point, you're going to have to step it up a little bit.
Yeah. If it works for them, though, I'm just playing devil's advocate.
Yeah, that's what I'm saying.
The tool is good for them, we're trying to leverage their tool, and now we want more from it. Again, playing devil's advocate, why do they have to do anything? It's doing what it has to.
It's kind of before we knew they even used ZONAR, we were asking them for a tool. So Ricky's saying, if we teamed up with other towns, and a bunch of towns were like, hey, this is what, that could affect them down the road, if another bus company had something great, you know?
I mean, I did talk to other districts that use a completely different program, and there's similar downfalls as well. So it's not specific to ZONAR. There are some other very similar.
There's just so many, there's so many apps out there that when it says they're arriving in five minutes, they arrive in five minutes. I mean, in a New England winter with young kids, when there's, when the buses are driving extra slow, do you really want them standing in negative temperatures for an extra 20 minutes? I just think there's better.
Let me make a suggestion then.
Either ZONAR can look at their, I mean, maybe they need to do an evaluation of what's going on in this, like, it shouldn't just make the bus disappear just because there's a small dead zone.
Let me make a suggestion. Why don't we work kind of on the backside of ZONAR before rolling it out? Because I would hate to roll it out, and like I said, when I, all the districts I spoke to, they have a person who's available to answer the phone. I'm not sure who that person would be, to be honest with you, in our district, we don't have a transportation, you know, coordinator. But I wouldn't, if everything else worked well, I would not do it because of that, I'd have to figure it out.
If it works well, you wouldn't get many phone calls. If it works how it is, you're going to get a lot.
That's the thing, and I kind of agree with what Lisa's saying, yeah, like something, because even just setting up the zone.
It's a pain in the butt.
I mean, I feel like I'm a pretty intelligent person, I was literally losing my mind, so I would feel bad if you were getting like 8,000 phone calls trying to set up the zone, because then it wouldn't work, and then I had the wrongs, it was like, so.
I definitely don't think we're ready to put it out to parents.
I'd say I'd hold off.
But I think there is value to trying to push the company to get something better, but I don't think what they have is what they're putting out.
What company are you planning on pushing?
I don't know.
Well, ZONAR, it sounds like, from what Ricky's saying, it has the capability, M&amp;J just chooses not to use it.
So then I have to get a J to talk to.
That's the dilemma. I mean, we're asking them to give us functionality that they don't need. Now, for a price, I'm sure that they'd be willing to maybe consider it. But that's, again, I'm trying to look at it from the other side of the coin. I agree with everything you're saying. If I were still in your shoes, hell yeah, I'd be wanting that information.
And I agree, like, we would have to certainly say, this isn't for the, you know, it's more of an afternoon thing. I definitely agree with what you're saying, like, it can't be like, oh, the bus, now send my kid out. But yeah, me, I don't, I don't think we should put it out yet, because I just think you don't, you guys will have more of a burden than.
The value of the good.
Yeah.
I agree.
At this point in time, with the way it's functioning.
Yeah, until, until either day, yeah.
Yep.
So maybe one of the starting questions would be, could they utilize a different service first, instead of AT&amp;T?
Well, what are, yeah. I don't know if it'd make a difference.
Maybe it's the function of ZONAR itself. I mean, you can get a package of something that does what you want it to do, as I've said. 15 other modules you can attach to it and link to it, or hook onto it, to give you additional functionality, just like any other software application out there. So maybe we need to put together what our expectations are, what our requirements are, and then go to them and say, hey, this is what we're really looking for, and ask them if they can actually get that bolt on.
It's a good idea. I mean, one parent just, the parents just, for them, what works for them is to have a tile for their child and their backpack.
Yep.
And that's, and that works for them. And then older children, they have like the.
Cell phone check.
The Life360, you know, one of the, the tracking on their, their phone app.
That works better.
It does.
I mean, until we get something in place, we could maybe just do a PDF recommendation if parents are concerned, like, how to use a tile, or how to use, pick one for iPhone, pick one for Android, and just two, two little verbs of how they can do it themselves.
Yeah, but that should be a parenting, they should.
If they want to have that information, because otherwise.
I don't think we need to put that on the school to recommend.
It's just an informative thing.
Isn't tracking the ZONAR, isn't that a parenting issue? Isn't that similar to a tile? I mean.
Well, I'm saying, if the school's providing a program, if we're not providing a program, I don't think we need to.
It was more about.
Yeah, just be, I guess, yeah, you're just being proactive.
We're providing ZONAR, but as a parent, I don't have to use it. Same things at a time.
Right.
I don't have to use the tile.
If we don't have the program, I was just saying.
I don't have to have my children have.
Have a courtesy.
A cell phone, or.
No, they don't have, right.
I don't have to have them.
No, I see what you're saying.
I don't have to be tracking them. I mean, it sounds good if it works, but if it doesn't work, it's crazy.
Right.
And there are better ways to do it.
But I agree with you, I mean, I don't know how the software isn't better than, I mean, like Uber, literally, when it says it's 50 feet away, it's legit 50 feet away.
So maybe there's a reason.
But it behooves Uber, in a monetary way.
That's right.
To make that, make that available.
I know, but.
Because they're competing with all those other services.
That's what I'm saying, we're a little obese Grammy, but if we have enough districts who want the same type of, then we have more leverage to go to the bus company, especially during a contract year.
Right, especially during a contract year.
This is what we want.
But there's still going to be a cost associated with that.
We're going to go with them too. It's going to be a consideration of the next contract.
I say, if another bus company, it's going to make it more competitive if they can do that.
Just going through ZONAR, and the way their headers, and the way they advertise, yes, they have this app, the My View about student tracking and stuff, but it's kind of like a side piece. Every main thing is fleet management, like.
Right.
So I think their, their initial technology was exactly what M&amp;J is, just as an asset, managing fuel costs and tracking your buses, and then they're like, oh, look at all these other companies adding student tracking, and then they added it, so I don't think they're up to par with that portion of it yet.
Yeah.
That's how I'm reading and how they advertise.
So we should definitely hold off until they've gotten that portion down.
Which they could bring it up quickly, but. Understand what are your requirements as a parent, and we document that, like I said. Document what the expectations are, or the wants are. Put it down, and then go to them and let them figure out how they can get it for us.
Yeah, I do.
Do we want to do that at a board meeting? This, this, this came from the board, this really didn't come from the parents, so.
I can call ZONAR as a parent, be like, hey, we were trying this app out, and let me tell you.
Yeah, going back, what is it that the district is asking for?
Exactly. If you read what this app is supposed to do, it sounds like it's their issue. M&amp;J is not going to, they're not tech support for this, they know that they have ZONAR, they know that ZONAR offers this app, so.
Is that a purchase? Is that an add-on or a purchase app? It is, okay.
And we have, I mean, M&amp;J had to have purchased it because we have a license that we signed on to, so it's activated, we have it.
I don't know if they would, if they would have had to purchase, like, when we purchase our software, right? You have modules.
We don't be able to log on and see the live screen, the live maps and stuff.
Okay.
You have to purchase the access rights.
I'm sorry?
You have to, purchase.
But I'm saying, we have modules that we have to add on of our, you know, I don't know if that's actually a module that was purchased with kind of the fleet management.
Which goes back to, I agree with you, that's why I'm saying, write down what our expectations are, what the wants are, then you can go to.
So we're not doing.
Go to somebody and say, how can this get done for us? This is what we want, to be able to do X, Y, and Z, what needs to be done to the current app that we're using via M&amp;J.
That'd be a good topic for parent advisory, for all the schools, so we can get what the parents, like Mark said, what the parents.
Well, I think from the, I mean, people wanted to track the person, I'm not sure if we're going to be able to track the person.
Well, I don't think we'd ever be able to track the person.
Sure you can't.
Well, like, oh, you mean if they had a card or something? Oh, 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 yeah. No, but are we looking to be able to check the bus live?
Put a tag in their backpack, and you'll be able to track them all over the place.
Right, parents can do that individually, but I thought we were trying to figure out a ZONAR.
The scanning thing.
Should just be done.
Is this an issue we need to solve now, or is this a discussion for the next time we have a bus contract negotiation, it gets weighed into how we're looking at different contracts?
We could keep talking in circles about this, but until you, in my eyes, until you clearly identify what your wants are, we're just going to keep talking in circles and saying, well, the website says they can do that, but if, if we're, and correct me if I'm wrong, we're leveraging what M&amp;J is already using, correct?
Yeah.
So we have to get, we have to work through them to get all of these wants. If their piece, what they paid for, doesn't come with that availability, that bolt on, then it's a moot point.
It does, it just doesn't work as it's advertised.
I would say that the one thing I think parents would want is, like, it's like if you were to call ZONAR, and I, correct me if I'm wrong, it's parents, don't you just want to be able to go on and see the bus live? I don't care about notification.
That's key features.
I mean, notifications are, I could care, I just want to be able to go on the app and, oh, there's the bus.
Yep.
That's it, like, literally nothing else.
That's what you do, right? I mean, so you go on, you look at it, you say, oh, it's about four minutes away.
That doesn't work.
Because you know what, you know what street it's passing.
Right, so if I saw it's on, yeah.
I mean, it's not projecting when it's actually going to stop.
Austin Brook, I now know, okay, I've got like a few minutes till.
They did have it set that you would get dings.
It would actually.
You had to set up little radii, and when it crossed in the radius.
And they even have a thing called ZPass, where you tap your card, same company.
The kids trying to find the card.
But, I mean, it literally says, in my view.
To tap real time.
On the bus. And it will only allow you, I'm thinking more for the older kids who like to switch buses to go to friends' houses when they're not supposed to.
But the older kids, they all phones now, they don't need, I would think this is more like for.
No, it's kind of grants you, it doesn't allow you, it'll alert the bus driver that you shouldn't be on this bus.
Yeah.
Then your parent, then your parent, he was supposed to be home, you know, those cases.
It will set, it will set to say, we're here.
I found the notifications completely unreliable. So that's why I, I wouldn't want to set it up, and then they're getting all these phone calls of.
Right.
Because I'm saying, I think parents would just want to go on, just like Live360, I don't get a notification of where Kenzie is, I just go on and see where she, you know what I mean? So, but anyway, yeah, we.
So you think this falls under facilities, communications, what do you think? I mean, send it to committee? I mean, right now, it's.
What else is there to discuss? Right now, it doesn't do.
Now, it's coming from the superintendent, because that's, first thing is to. The reach out was, I think, from the superintendent and from the business manager, in talking to M&amp;J months and months ago, right?
Yeah, that was requested by a board member.
I can share the data sheet.
So is there, is there a way we can continue forward looking at it? Like, through committee, through the board, and take the pressure, not the pressure, but take the burden off of the superintendent and the business manager? So is there a committee that would want to volunteer?
Negotiate.
Were you planning on calling?
Well, I think the first step is to go through M&amp;J, because they're offering the service. So they're, they're ZONAR's customer, we are M&amp;J's customer. So it's kind of like a wholesaler distributor end user sort of thing, so we should not skip the line first, if, but M&amp;J should be, I can, I can send this PDF cut sheet of ZONAR My View, which is what we have, what we're given by M&amp;J, and what it's supposed to do, and it does not do that. So that should be M&amp;J going to ZONAR and being, hey, you guys advertise this, it doesn't work the way you say it does. That should be step one, and if they don't, then M&amp;J could tell each district, hey, we're not getting anywhere with ZONAR, won't you harass them a little bit?
So, so John, to your point, Ricky has a good grasp of a lot of this stuff, if everybody is in agreement, let him go run with exactly what he said.
I'm just chucking, because I just, Ricky's got a lot, honestly, from us.
Yep.
With all the facility stuff.
Yep. But he's back from Atlanta now, so.
Guess where I'm going tomorrow morning?
He's got plans.
No, wait, Wednesday and Thursday, guess where I'm going?
Atlanta.
Hopefully it's solved by then.
We'll, we'll contact Zonar.
I would start with M&amp;J, honestly, and let them put pressure on them because it's not M&amp;J's fault. They're using a technology from Zonar and Zonar needs to provide what they advertise.
And if you give, let's see that to work from.
Yeah, I'll send this over because, I mean.
That way you have what he's talking and referencing.
The way they advertise this My View thing that we all used, sounds like everything we need and it's perfect. It just doesn't work that way.
Never is. Okay. We'll follow.
You know what the fun part is? On this data sheet, one of the bullet points is reduce parent calls to the district. I mean, they even hired.
We actually, we actually are, we actually don't get a lot of phone calls.
But this would increase your.
I was gonna say, you put this out live for everybody.
We don't be, we don't want that to happen to you guys.
Just the install.
And even, it even says, I know the whole 24-hour update thing. On here it even says, even bus substitution automatically update in the parent app, creating a seamless workflow unless, no, it doesn't.
I would say, I agree with that because when you were saying that, I was writing down in my notes, like, that should be able, you should be able to change that real time in today's apps. Just like using Uber example or Lyft. If the driver changes for whatever reason, it's gonna flip right over to that next driver that's coming to you. So the technology is there.
Okay. I will follow.
Okay, next.
Moving on. 3B, we do have a resignation, Mr. Noah Herbert, who was a middle school, grade seven science teacher. He's been with us for one year. He's done a really fabulous job, very energetic. He has resigned due to a family move into a different part of the state, so we will definitely miss him. I actually had to even ask Tim, like, has he only been here a year? Because he, he, he came in like ready to go. He was so energetic, he is so energetic and, you know, the kids really enjoy him and he loves teaching science, so, so we will be looking for a, a science teacher. Okay, and 3C, I, I thought I would just share just kind of bullet points. You know, it's, it's interesting being a, a school administrator. Lots of people will say, you know, what do you do in the summer? Must be so relaxing and so easy. And all I do is picture like panda bears trying to get onto a hammock and toppling over, you know, headfirst each time, so. I thought I would share just some of the, the major trainings that the admin team has been doing over the summer as a group. And some of these trainings, we have some of our staff as well. We had Behavioral Threat Assessment, which is the Comprehensive School Threat Assessment Guidelines. So we've done that with all of our administrators, plus our school, some of our school counselors, social workers, school psychologists. Dr. Kim Myers from the state is the one who facilitated that training. And she's the one who helps us with parent reunification as well. We have had full day training for parent reunification process. This has been a very, very long study and planning and we are just about there. We will be partnering with also Suffolk primarily. We do a lot of training with them so that we have common vernacular. So if one of the districts needed some supports, we, we have a team of people from the area who would be able to support one of our neighboring communities because we would all have the same language, almost like, you know, the police town, it's called the Blue Plan, right? If the Blue Plan was rolled out, you have people from different areas coming. So we kind of are combining, making our own kind of grassroots effort so that we have a core group of staff from particular towns that we can support each other, you know, in, in any situation, really. So that for me, the, the process is very unnerving and I always tell people, I hope we, I'll do all the planning. I'll spend years. I'll do everything in the hopes of never having to use it. But one of the biggest stressors is personnel. You know, we are, you know, schools are not in a position where we can take, you know, six or seven classroom teachers because those classroom teachers have children. So we don't have the depth of staffing that doesn't have direct supervision. So for us to work with Granby or Canton or Weathersfield or Newington or Suffolk or Enfield is very advantageous for us because we know we will have supports to work with us and vice versa. You know, if another district needed supports, we would be able to send staff to support them as well. My School Bucks is our student activity module, so we participated in some training over, actually, I think it was last week for a few hours. Also, we did a full day of youth mental health training with Justine Ginsburg from Farmington Valley. All of our admin team, actually Scott Menard, Trooper Dimitrian are also part of some of our other trainings as well. The youth training was our admin team with additional, you know, staff members as well. The idea is to, we've also offered as the parents, so back in the spring, Justine offered a training after school or in the evening for like two, three hours. And we had some, a couple of parents and staff members that joined. I actually participated in that as well. So the idea is we would be able to incorporate this into some of our, our health classes, you know, with our students, you know, down the road once a certain number of people are trained. You have to have 10% of your staff trained before you can roll it out. But the training would actually come through Justine, so she would come into our sessions and do the, the teaching to our children. Or young adults, I should say. And then we have Title IX investigation training coming up. There's been some change in legislator and legislation and we have our attorney Kyle who will be training the admin team on Title IX. Those are some of the big ones, but I thought it might be good for you to, to hear some of what we've been doing. So, all right, and that's, that's what I have.
Thank you. Moving on to committee reports, I'll start policy. I've got, I'm missing as nice enough to copy these for me. This is the Policy 3453 Student Activity Funds that we worked on. And this is what we landed on.
I also copied the old one too, so you're right, old in the new.
So one's shipment though, right?
Yep. So the top one is the, the draft and the bottom one is our current policy.
So this is the draft that says shipment on it? Okay.
So the top one is the new one?
Top one, two-sided is the, the draft. The bottom one, two-sided is current policy.
Oh, I think we made it around. All right. We do have.
Donna, you have copies? You have them?
Good.
After brunch or on?
It's cool in here. It's warm here, quick.
Moving to shipment, policy throws for the first side is the shipment school activity. And then as a subcommittee or a board, there was conversation about adding specific class account information. So in one of our, I think it was, I don't know if it was a special board meeting, it might have been policy subcommittee meeting.
It was a policy.
We came up with some language and I did run this through our attorney to, to, you know, check as well. So that gives us a little bit more language than shipment alone.
Did he think it was necessary?
He thought it was good.
Okay.
He thought it was good.
Yep.
And then just keep in mind, we also are, have an advisor handbook that will give more specific information, you know, for how that works. But this, I think, and I'm happy to take feedback, should at least put us in a position where we have, you know, policy language for class, specific class accounts.
In the handbook that, the guidebook that you were referencing, include things like this in there as well, and I think that in the handbook you should include timelines because I was kind of thinking through this. Part of the, the challenge is that a number of families seem to wait until the last moment and the funds suddenly spike. What about putting a, a deadline? March 1st, you want to go to the senior banquet? Because as I understand it, this year, this past year, there was a, an influx of dues that came in to allow the students to attend senior banquet. Is that accurate, to the best of your knowledge?
I, I think there's always an influx towards the end of senior year.
Okay, fair, fair. Using it just because it came up this year more, so it was more in the forefront. But with that being said, put a deadline. If you want to go March 1st, you gotta have this stuff in. They can now plan a whole lot better. And if they don't have it in, oh, well. Put a deadline and, and hold them accountable. The, the families accountable to getting this stuff in so that the class can do their due diligence and have a better understanding from a bunch of perspective of how much they have, if there's gonna be an overage. Then they can start to talk about doing something like this and the advisor can then assist them and give them the guidance to help them at the end of the year. They've already got it planned out. They didn't have to worry about this, this large windfall that just came in. Something like that.
So a lot of that is because of dues and we are going to be moving away from dues. Because aside from that, we do have more and more families or, or students, young adults, that might not want to attend something. So they don't want to pay all the dues or some of the dues, so. But the handbook, to your point, Mr. Andrews, it is kind of a month by month. It's kind of delineated during this month, here's what needs to happen, you know, with the class advisors. During this month, here's what needs to happen, especially senior year because that's, or juniors, starting with junior year. Because those are the most active years.
As we talked about before and I mentioned, as they get to that January timeframe of their senior year, this is where the information that you've just, that the committee has captured at this point, they need to start talking about that and, and that should be on their checklist of things to do so they can start to plan accordingly, so we're not running into this anymore in the future. We may be doing away with the dues as you suggested, but whatever it is, there's gotta be, whether it's March 1st, March 15th, but somewhere where it gives them a couple of months to start to wind down. They know what they have and everything's in place and they can start to plan accordingly for the stuff that we're talking about here. What are they gonna do with the overage?
Yes.
So.
So to that point, our, just our class of 2024, you know, had, knew what they had at a certain point. All the expenditures come through for end of year, prom, graduation, you know, all that. A couple more funds went in, so a budget has, you know, their final number has been received and, you know, they'll, they will let us know because the advisory spoke with the kids, the, the class, so to make that determination. And we'll have some type of a, like a form, you know, that the advisor, the officers can sign off on. So the principal has it, so we know the desires of the class with any funds that haven't been expended.
Is it gonna state the amount in the fund? Because I think that's important at that point in time.
Yes. That's a good point.
It's just like, we, we don't want to run into this problem again.
We do not.
We're, yes, go ahead, John.
You're giving examples of allowable expenditure?
Yes.
Could someone give me clarification on bullet point four? The definition of what an allowable educational event that benefits the class as a whole?
Yeah, reunion.
How's that an educational event that's a social event?
That's.
It's not an educational event.
So maybe it should just be an allowable event.
Wait, where are you, John?
On both floors.
On the backside of the ship.
Oh, okay, yep.
Examples of an allowable expenditure may include.
So it should just be for an allowable event?
You're giving, you're giving.
Yeah, I think you could get.
You're saying that's an example of an allowable expenditure, which is fine, but it's not an educational event.
Yeah.
It's a lesson in everything.
There is a lesson in everything, including your reunion.
Let's hope it's a good lesson and not.
So are, this front page, School Activity Funds, that's the shipment.
That's shipments.
Right, because as I say, we don't have a lunch program, so should I not even be looking at that? We're looking at the second page.
Well, we're gonna use shipments no matter, no matter what it says because it's been allowed enough to use it. What we wanted to include was on the backside. Okay, so educational comes out.
We would do something that doesn't apply to us?
Well, it says they may establish school activity funds to handle any of the following. Doesn't mean you have to.
A school one? Oh, okay. You don't have a driver education program.
Noted. I, with a lot of the, the things that we've looked at on the committee so far, we've just said, if it's, if it's framed in a way that doesn't say you have this, you have that, in this case, then let's just, let's just use it and, you know, if we don't have it, we don't have it.
Okay.
Sorry, go back.
Again, past practice, I guess, was the individual class treasurer. Was the treasurer for that class's student activity fund. And this would imply that that's not the case, so I'll, I'll assume that's not the case because it says the superintendent shall designate a person to serve as treasurer of any school activity fund. That would imply that the superintendent shall determine for any of these funds and I would assume each class would still have its own student activity fund.
Oh.
So I just wanted to make that clear or understand that the past practice is going away.
Well, the, the treasurer shall be bonded and shall keep separate accounts, so that is the business office.
Right.
Yes.
So maybe clarifying.
Past practice is, is being blown up. It's no longer.
We still have a class treasurer.
Right, but then class treasurer.
The way it's written looks like it's going away.
Would not be responsible for handling the student activity funds, which would be smart.
But before, we used to have a bookkeeper, so it's not completely blowing it up because there was still the class treasurer, but then the bookkeeper did all that. Do you get what I'm saying? Like I was the class treasurer, but June Jansik was the one who made sure.
This is referencing is that bookkeeper.
I can track it, but they can't.
I got the impression from our last couple meetings where we've had people that were class treasurers and it seemed like maybe there's a little bit, has, has been in the past, maybe not particularly every year, but there's been too much responsibility thrown on the class treasurer to be in fact responsible for these, these funds. And, and the language here makes it clear that that's no longer the practice.
All right, I'm just gonna ask Mary a quick question. Our account specialist has been bonded.
Sort of titular type of.
I think.
You might not know that then.
It comes down to.
Yes. So our, our account, accounting specialist was bonded, so it's kind of like the overarching, like, due share responsibility has to rest with the business office because they're still audited, everything still follows. So I, I guess I hear what you're saying.
This needs to be rephrased, reworded to reflect what you just said to maybe clear up the, the potential misunderstanding of what that is because.
This is the policy everyone has and they all have class advisors and class officers.
See, I don't look at that as it's saying that, like, there's still the class treasurers. I think there's always been, there's always been a class treasurer. I feel like there's always been someone who was in charge of the money, right?
That's not the class treasurer, right.
The class treasurer is not.
So the class treasurer is the class treasurer, but we had a bookkeeper and then after the bookkeeper, probably it was someone in the business office, like, maybe it was, I don't know who it was, but there's always someone who's.
Physically handles the money.
Yeah, so I don't think, I actually think this is past practice for a long time. But I see what you're saying, but I didn't, I, I personally didn't read it that way, but I could see how you're reading it that way.
One young man seemed to be feeling that he had been asked to, to be more than just.
No, no, no. He felt like he had no clue what was going on.
He didn't have.
No, because he.
I never got the impression from him that he felt responsible.
No, he didn't feel responsible. He was upset because he never knew the amount because the person who knew the amount wasn't communicating that with him.
Okay.
That's what, yeah, no, he didn't feel responsible for it.
And I don't think it's a change of policy because if you read our old policy, it doesn't say anything about the class.
Yeah, I'm, I'm not saying it's a change of policy. I just thought that perhaps past practice would suggest that these, these students were being asked to control funds, to do banking, you know, and were responsible for the funds.
No, yeah.
Some of our prior discussions just.
If we were to go look and see what the role of the treasurer is, I'm sure that we know. If we had that with us right now, you'd probably see the delineation.
I don't think there is a definition of it, probably.
It's very, very loose and vague in the handbook.
So we're gonna update the handbook with, yeah.
Okay. Yeah.
And I think this also ties into the other conversation of the budget transparency because this will just be another sector of it and the treasurer can see it whenever they want, once we find a solution to the other portion as well. Kind of ties, goes hand in hand. And that was one of the complaints they had, that they had no idea what it was, when it became that much. So if we solve the other problem, we just roll this into it and the treasurer, the whole class could look whatever they want and see what their class balances.
Because this is school activity funds in general, so if I look at that line under what you were reading, John, such treasurer shall be bonded and keep separate accounts for each school activity fund, which is what our business office does.
Right? Yep. Good.
You're right. The term, because we have two.
The treasurer is not.
Yes.
The treasurer is not.
Not a capital T.
A youngster in our school district.
Right, that's all.
And I'm comfortable with this as it reads if the, if the policy committee is comfortable with it. I would concur with their opinion.
I would as well, but the suggestion was to add some of the stuff on the back to avoid this problem in the future.
Just add one clarification, mention with that, what an educational, five years from now an educational event.
Yes. Okay, you'll, you'll accept it all then, John, except for no educational before about.
Allowable event.
Allowable, yeah.
Allowable then. But it's certainly not gonna be educational.
If it's intended to be a reunion, it's, it shouldn't have the.
Any other thoughts on this while we're talking about it?
When it says the intent of the reunion class fund expenditures will be provided to the principal by July 1st, are the, is that in the handbook? Do the students have a form they need to, are they gonna know that or?
That's what I just said. There'll be a form that the principal will follow up with the class advisors.
Perfect, so we're not leaving it up to like kids to remember to do that by.
Which goes back to the point I was making in, for roles and responsibilities of the advisor, is in. of the advisor, is in January, they start, as their checklist, start identifying and having the discussion, what are we going to do with the, any excess funds? So that by mid-May, they already know it. They already know it long before the July 1st deadline.
Yeah.
If they choose option four, though, and the district is maintaining the funds for five years for the reunion, and they don't have the reunion, do, like, I know we have the, okay, as of July 1st, but if, as of July 1st, if they say, okay, we want you guys to hold it for five years, then what?
Oh, yeah, we should have something that says, after the five years, if, oh, wait.
Yeah. I mean, we have if they don't tell us by July 1st, but there's no after five years, what if then? Because it, it's kind of a kick the can down the road option for number four there, and if they don't, you know, we need to have, like, a deadline at the end of those five years.
In the event, it is not used, this is what happens to it.
So what is the high school general fund? What is that used for?
Principal's fund, wait.
Oh, is that the principal's?
Well, remember, the general fund is that huge umbrella that has all the categories under it.
I'm just wondering, like, what, so what would this money?
Like, which general fund?
Yeah, like, what would they, if they didn't use it by the five years, or they don't, they decide that they don't really care, what does it go to, I guess? Like, would we be, would the board be notified of that? Wouldn't?
I, I wouldn't think so.
Because it's not the school's money? So go, so when you say the general fund, what is that? What would that be used for, then?
So one district specifically says the scholarship fund, you know, scholarship fund. That's actually a question I was going to ask, because I took this language from another district, but is there something specific that the board would feel comfortable, that if that money wasn't expended in five years, if that's what the class chose?
I was thinking, just a general scholarship, some sort of general scholarship fund, and it goes into that.
Yeah, I would take it as.
Where there's a committee that evaluates and awards and supervises what's going to happen that way.
Actually promoting that scholarship. It just, we talked about a scholarship fund in one of our meetings, and I thought that the school couldn't have its own scholarship fund, because we would need outside parties to decide who gets it. I'm not, I'm not clear on.
I thought we ended up settling on that, that there was one, that we had a panel and an advisory in place. It was a long meeting, I know, I remember. But I think that it came to that there is a committee in place that does handle that already. That's why, that's why we listed it.
If organizations, organizations have an option, they can say, here's the scholarship I'm offering, we would like the applications, we will choose the recipient. Or they'll say to us, please choose the recipient, here's a criteria we'd like you to use. Or they might say to us, please choose the recipient based on what you think is best. So it happens anyway.
But what about the money? Like, if we had to go to a, is that what you're saying? If we had to go to a scholarship fund?
Right. Who's administering that?
Who's administering, like, yeah, who's getting that money?
Do we need to specify that, though?
Well, I mean.
I mean, you either have to, I think we get rid of the generic, the only reason we'd hold it for five years is for a reunion, right?
Yep.
So I think we just need to specify that, and then if, still not, then add a sentence down here, if not used after the five years, I mean, you can give a little tiny, like, but by this date, following five years after graduation, it gets transferred to the high school general fund. We don't have to specify, it's in the general fund.
I know, we don't have to specify, but what's it being, like, what, I'm trying to, what is, what is the high school general fund? Is it being used?
Take it off that field trips, right?
Is that what it's being used for? Wavers, I mean, it's a general fund.
It could go into any of those accounts. This particular school just said general fund, they didn't specify. Another school I looked at, they said scholarship fund. I kind of like the idea of field trips, that could be, I think, a good option.
That's general fund.
It's, yep, it's a category in the general fund.
Okay.
I like the idea of doing a rolling, like, a nice-to-have list, where it doesn't justify requesting a capital project, but it would be nice to have, and maybe they didn't donate to it, but maybe we can have a rotating, and then if it doesn't get applied, then we can apply it and kind of keep, keep a bucket for some, like, something like the, I know your dad, he, he always wants a new marquee, so something like that, we could keep a list, and then that way they can see, like.
Would that be something that class would do, though?
I would say it can go right into student activities, then.
Yeah.
Because student activities, we don't have a, we don't have a scholarship fund per se, right? The scholarships come to us, and we, you know, move the funds out. But student activities, it's a, if we have a child with a waiver, we have a child with, you know, a host of different things, you know?
Well, they could donate to it.
That could go into our student activities, that particular silo of the general fund.
So if we don't actually have a scholarship fund, then maybe we shouldn't list this as a specific scholarship option, but scholarship to a designated group that administers scholarship? Like, you know how we said here, we have a registered nonprofit, like, the donation is to a registered nonprofit, or the scholarship is to a.
Not to be managed by East Grand B Public Schools. Like, they have to choose. There's a lot of groups in town who do a scholarship.
Right, and those, and those funds, they go from that entity to the recipient, they don't go.
Directly to the school.
Through the school, there is no scholarship fund.
So we should take that off as an option, and.
Or rephrase it.
Rephrase it.
Maybe it could be used in conjunction with a donation to a registered nonprofit, perhaps for condition, perhaps for use as scholarship or something.
A lot of these problems are going to disappear if, in fact, we go away from the dues.
Right.
The main objective is to get them to spend their money before they leave.
Right, but if we, if we get rid of a dues system, you're going to find that the surplus or the balance that's being reported is going to be fairly.
Yeah, because now all they're counting on is fundraisers.
Right, right.
Yeah, because they're all going to be spending. Right.
And it should be, we discussed this already, it should be targeted fundraising.
Correct.
So I've taken scholarships off the list of examples, and I've been working with the language, but wanted to add something, if the intent, so the final paragraph says, you need to name your intent by July 1st, or the money goes into the general fund. I'll throw something in, if the intent of the class on expenditures is not utilized by the time they agree to, or I could do that, or five years after the initial intent was set forth, then that will be transferred to the high school fund, so we can, so for those classes that decide they want to set aside some money for a future reunion, for your example, they don't have it, then that eventually is going to get transferred to the general fund as well. So just put, add some language in, take care of that.
Also recommend changing the language of the very first sentence.
Under student activity funds, class counts?
Yes.
Okay.
I do not like how it says, I mean, I like it personally, but I, I can see it becoming a.
Who have contributed?
Yes, the who have contributed to the accumulation of such.
Oh, yeah, that, I agree with that completely.
Yeah.
I can take the whole sentence.
I mean, I agree with it.
Yeah.
You can just put a period for school.
But we, there's no way of tracking that and keeping, it's.
Or students.
Okay.
Actually, how about expended as to benefit of those students.
In such a way as to benefit those students, period.
Because if we're talking five years after graduation, we're not talking about currently in school.
That's true.
And we're not talking about contributors. So just, we're just talking about benefiting students, those students.
Okay, so I'll do some rewriting on those.
Class of whatever given year or something.
So if I don't, I don't contribute anything, and.
There's no way.
And the class is a real fundraising class, I.
You're going to float like you are.
I can benefit.
How about students of that class?
Yeah.
Okay, all right.
Right, of that class doesn't limit it to currently in school, and it doesn't restrict contributors.
Okay, you, you lost me, I thought I understood, but you lost me now. Tell me again.
The very first sentence, if you just cut it off after benefit those students of the class.
Or benefit the students of that class. Because these student activity funds are set up aside for each class, class of 23, class of 24.
Well, but then you also have, you also have different ones for international travel, and you have some, you have.
This is just class accounts.
Oh, this is just class accounts, okay, all right. As long as it's just class accounts.
Class account, I would give them school year or something.
Yeah.
Then, yes, that's correct.
I would give them graduation, like, if they're identified. That would be your whole first paragraph, the defining term.
All right, so I'll rewrite this, so we can do a second read. In terms of policy committee meetings, we do need to get back on the calendar. Policy committee is August, too soon, we not want to start this up until this full year releases. I'll throw out some dates in early September, how does that sound to everyone?
Sure, sounds good.
Good? All right, if I can get back to my agenda, we're going to find out who's next.
Budget.
Budget committee, please. Anything new?
Just to give you a heads up, I'm out of town, August 19th, probably through the end of the month.
I think I'm going to do September.
Okay.
I'm going to do September.
I'm going to roll in September, all right.
All right, so do we have an update from the budget committee? I guess we're done, for now. There's more to say about.
I'll, I'll just add, because it's going to be a blink, and we're going to be starting the new process again.
Yeah.
So we will be looking at a different format, you know, looking forward.
Curriculum committee, anything new, Lisa?
We have agreed that we will meet as needed over the summer, and it has not been needed at this time, so there are no new updates.
Facilities, Ricky?
We are planning, I got some responses back, and I responded to them tonight, to have some walkthroughs with some irrigation companies to firm up some quotes, since our capital's been approved. I also met with a fencing company today, this afternoon, he expects to have a quote to us by the end of the week.
Give my response sometime.
Yeah, and I also was able to look it up. Check any dimension, anyway.
There you go.
I also want to pull together the old athletic fields committee again sometime while this process is going, just because the fencing guy did make a few good points at the layout. Now's the time to change, make any changes, if we're going to replace the fencing, so if, I know Mark had said in the softball, bringing in a little bit, there's some questions about why the sideline is unsymmetrical, and if you look at some of it, goes from the foul pole and then kind of wanders off in a snaky weird way off into the woods.
Foul line, me? Well, I could have told you that.
Be out of.
The whole thing is all jacked up.
We could make it better for the grounds, DPW, to be able to get a zero turn behind it instead of pushmowing behind them, because on the edge of the baseball field, that whole side is only about three feet behind the fence, and it's just about 40 feet from the foul line to where that fence is, so it's just, why is that fence where it is? We don't know. So I kind of want to get, like, the AD, maybe the coach, some other names were brought up today when I stopped by to talk about it, pretty much the athletic facilities committee, and bring in some other people with some input, and if you're putting in a new fence, you might as well make it how you want it. So, well, we'll get that scheduled coming up.
Sounds right.
That's about it, what we talked to the last facilities, as far as the fencing and irrigation goes, and then there's some updates on grants with the doors, should be, Lisa, we'll be publishing those minutes, so you can catch up there.
Yeah, I'll, if you don't mind, I'll interject just a minute, because with our HVAC grant and our door safety grant, there's some definitely delays with lead time in some of the products. So we've already requested a extension for the HVAC project, and the doors, we are finalizing the RFP for, we have the RFP for design, that was already awarded, now we're with the construction, so.
Our air quality and air balancing then get pushed, because if we're going to have a new system, it seems silly to get it done on an old system when we know we're getting a new system shortly down the road, so do we get to kick that can down, too?
Well, we can't kick down the road is the air quality committee.
Oh, the fun one.
Mm-hmm. I'm sorry?
Have we not formed one?
We need to form one ASAP. And it follows what's called the Tools for Schools protocols, which is on the Department of Public Health, I think it's Department of Public Health website. It's a pretty in-depth, and the committee has, needs to consist of board member, a coordinator, a facilities person, health folks, teacher, parent, students, and there's a, literally a notebook of processes that need to be followed, discussed, and then decisions made through that committee. So we are in high negotiations for who that coordinator's going to be. So far, I'm winning.
Winning or losing?
I'll voluntarily be the board member, but I don't want to be coordinating.
Yeah. So I will tell you, many districts are hiring somebody to be the coordinator, and others have a facilities, school, you know, facilities department that they kind of tag that, so. Having neither. So, but that's something we do need to form, so a message will go out, because we will need a board member, you know, to, to join. Yeah, that's probably been a big, a big thing. And then, Ricky, to your point, that committee kind of decides, because there's, the language seems to be shifting between the annual testing and then the five-year testing as well. Some of it, we've already worked with our HVAC, you know, updates, you know, some companies do one part of the testing, but they don't do the other part of the testing, so it's, and then there's, I think I shared it already, there's not a lot of companies that do some of it, which is why they, the state has pushed back the requirement, but the committee has not been pushed back, so. So that will be, that's coming down the pike.
Anything else on facilities?
I just, have you read the full statute on that? There's one word that drives me nuts when I read it. It says, start this somewhere, quote my favorites. The beginning of it starts off, each local and regional board of education may establish an indoor air quality committee for each. The word may.
It's optional.
Does make it optional, doesn't say shall.
Does not say shall. Just putting that out there.
I'll have to reread that first line. Because I thought it read must. It's, even have my M-words mixed up.
Once it gets into the middle, it says such committee shall include, but that seems like if you have a committee, it shall include. I don't know.
I mean, everything I've been to, and every meeting I've been to, it's, it's not optional.
That is a curious word, though, may, but that's very intentional. Yes, so. Anything else? Negotiations, John?
Or Mark.
Or? I'm so sorry, Mark.
Nothing.
I'm so sorry.
It's okay.
Okay, communications?
Nothing.
Okay, it was you, so thanks for jumping in before I said your name.
You got it.
Decised. So executive session on a personnel matter, superintendent evaluation for 2024 and contracts for 2025 and 2026, so, I mean, just a query, Bob is not here, correct?
Correct.
He's not on the line. Is this something we want to put off for another day, when he's available, we're all fresher, because it's not at the tail end of a, a meeting, or is this?
It needs some time to specifically focus on it.
I think you're deserving of that, but I think you also want to get this done as soon as possible, right?
My concern is, I, because I also need to look at the August date, I, I will not be available for our August date, so we'll have to change that, yes.
Okay.
Oh, neither are you. I tried to shift things around, but.
Well, I, I mean, I'm not suggesting that we put this off forever, I think we should look at dates next week, when everybody's available. Are you available next week?
I mean, I'm prepared tonight.
If, I'm sorry, if the superintendent's prepared tonight, I mean.
Let's go.
Yeah, we can.
This didn't work its way onto the agenda.
Because we don't know if he's going to be available next. I mean, he's not always going to be here.
Okay.
Thank you.
Yeah, okay. All right, that sounds good. So do I need a motion to go into executive session?
I would move to go into executive session.
I would second that.
And I would invite.
Yes.
Superintendent. See, do you want, does this man appear also?
No. I don't need to join us.
I would invite the superintendent.
Okay. So I second it, we're moving into executive session at 8:12.